The program will be shared on TV by WCPO 9, WKRC 12, CET. The Inquirer is going to carry it, VXU, Radio 1 stations, including the Wiz and the Buzz, to name some, but that gives you some good options, I think, there. So, again, many thanks for the partnership, just to get the message out to folks throughout the region, that we're all in this together, and there's something that we can all do to reduce the spread of the virus. All right, that concludes my comments. I'm going to go to Jeff Aludo for his comments and the by leave item.
Thank you, Madam President. Really only one comment today, and you've already, the commissioners have already hit it, and it's just a reminder of our budget hearing tonight at 6:00 PM, and look forward to continuing to engage the commission and the public on questions and issues regarding the county's general fund budget. I do have one by leave on the agenda, that is by budget adjustment number 46, that is $2.385 million. This is for, it's, most of that is for sheriff grant awards, 2.2 million. There's also reimbursement funding for job and family services, and their assistance migrating the commissioner's agenda system. There are year-end transfers for planning and development, probate court and veteran services, and there's two CARES Act items in there as well. One, appropriating the interest earned on the award of the grant, and also transferring appropriations from personnel to non-personnel to align with our current plan. And the administration recommends approval.
Thanks, Jeff. Commissioners, any questions or comments related to the by leave?
I have no comments.
No questions or comments, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, then I'm going to move that we approve of budget adjustment number 46 for $2,385,473.80 for sheriff's grants, CARES Act interest earnings, and the commissioner's agenda system, as well as transfers for year-end balancing in CARES Act public safety expense.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, that would complete my by leaves.
All right, thank you, Jeff. We are a little ahead of time, so, and I always hesitate to start these before the actual time, so let's go through the, some other items here on the agenda. Let's start from the bottom up, shall we? Let's get to the consent agenda items. Item number four has been pulled, so in front of us, we have consent agenda items five through 21. Commissioners, are there any questions related to any of the consent agenda items?
I have no questions.
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move that we approve then of consent agenda items five through 21.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
All right, still ahead of time, so let's, the regular agenda items are related to MSD, so why don't we go through the regular agenda items and then move into the public hearing? Does that sound good to everyone? All right, let's do it. All right, so I cannot see who else is on the line here, is Diana? She, Diana is...
I think Jack is on.
All right, very good. So, we've got three regular agenda items. Diana, do you want to lead us through these?
Good afternoon. Dr. Brennan Kim is going to lead us through the regular agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for considering these today. The first item on the regular agenda is for MSD's 2021 fees. This item is for entry into your record. MSD has presented this item every year since the establishment of the 2001 rules and regulations that provides for automatic adjustment of certain fees, not all fees, but certain fees within the rules and regulations, and those are fees that relate to connecting to the sewer system, sewer taper licensure fees, as-built drawings, holding tank or hauled waste discharge and permit fees, and construction inspection fees for private development, and the single-family local and lateral sewer assessment credit. For 2021, no fees included in this adjustment are increased beyond their 2020 level, so there hasn't been any change between 2020 and 2021 for the fees that I just mentioned. Also, the assessment credit has not increased. The only change has been for some connection charges for water meter sizes, one and a half inch to 12 inches, and those have actually decreased from 2020 levels. And MSD will be bringing forward amendments, as I understand it, to the hauled waste fee schedule in 2021, which would require a public hearing, since this has changed to the rules and regulations. Again, this request from MSD is for entry into your record.
Thank you. What we're going to do, let's do all three, Jack.
Okay. So, the next item is, item number two, is sanitary source 6484, Milk Creek, Maine's wastewater treatment plant, main substation improvements. This request is to authorize, as a design-build project, to authorize a guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, for this progressive design-build asset management project, and to appropriate an additional $11,281,494 to fully fund its construction. The project is located at the Milk Creek wastewater treatment plant in the city of Cincinnati's Lower Price Hill neighborhood, and is part of the board-approved and modified 2020 MSD CIP. The total estimated cost for the construction of this project is $18.5 million. This particular project originates because the electrical substation at the plant was constructed in 1973. Replacement parts are either no longer available, or they don't meet current safety standards for plant personnel. The request is based upon the GMP proposal provided by the design builder. Design-build costs have increased as compared with the legislation that was presented and approved by the board in 2018, and it's based upon the design builder's increase as presented to MSD. With me today, if there are any technical questions, not only Deputy Director Ryan Welsh and Chief Engineer, but also Sarah Kramer, who is the project manager. The last item is a local sewer, and the request for Parakeet Court, I'm sorry, Parakeet Drive local sewer, is to establish a variety of different assessment actions that lead to a public hearing. And these include approving detailed plans, specifications and estimate of cost, approve the tentative assessments, which would be levied against the properties that are benefited by this local sewer, and to approve holding a public hearing on February 25, 2021, at 1:15 PM. Again, these three actions fulfill all of the law and mandated requirements under the higher revised code to hold a public hearing. This particular local sewer, which is located in Green Township on Parakeet Drive, was requested by 70% of the 10 benefited properties. The total project cost is estimated at $763,000. The total cost to property owners would be, under MSD policy, no more than $12,000, or 16% of the estimated project cost. And assessment credits are $643,000, which are 84% of the estimated total project cost. None of the project, none of the properties in this area qualify for any credits based upon the Hamilton County Public Health Systems, HSTS, or Home Sewage Treatment System credit. However, they have noted to MSD that five out of the nine, or 55% of the project area HSTSs are marked as being failed. If you have any questions on any of those projects, we're happy to entertain them.
Thank you, appreciate that, Jack. We did get an email from Karen Ball related to these three items. She gave us county perspective on it, and is in agreement that these are all items that should move forward, and so Karen, thank you for weighing in on that. And I particularly am glad that there's, you know, more projects moving in Lower Price Hill, where we've had a great deal of problems related to odor in particular, but, but just getting that, you know, moving and online, so, so I'm glad to see this project as one of those included in the list. So Commissioners, any questions or comments related to these items?
I have no questions or comments.
No questions, thank you.
So I have a quick favor. I don't know about the other two Commissioners, I don't know that I've ever met Sarah Kramer, who is the project manager, so Sarah, can you, we just would like to say hello and welcome to you, are you, are you there?
I'm here, let me try and turn you on the spot. Hi.
There you are. Very good. I expect we'll be seeing more of you, so just wanted to make sure we could put the name with the face.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Without further ado, I will move that we approve of regular agenda items one through three.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
I'm being optimistic about maybe having some meetings in person eventually. I don't know about you guys, but maybe sometime next year, we'll see. All right, it is time for the public hearing. So this is the hearing to consider the MSD 2021 operating and capital improvement program budget. We had a presentation at our last meeting, and I do not think we need to do that again, because I feel like we're all up to speed. So Diana, I don't know if you want to give some very brief comments to begin, but I would like to get to public comments as quickly as possible, especially since Commissioner Summer Dumas has to jump off, so maybe some brief comments to get us started, and then we'll go to the public.
Sure, thank you, Commissioners. I was not planning on going through in detail like we did last time either, so we did have some slides, but honestly, I can just talk through it if you'd prefer, that's up to you. But just since we're not looking at the papers, what I was, wanted to do was just give a quick recap of the operating budget request, and the CIP, the capital improvement budget request, respond to questions specifically from the first hearing, and, and then we'll have an opportunity to hear public comment and respond again. So yeah, Marilyn is going to put it up, but I do think it'll be much quicker, and this way I can, if you want to just go ahead to the operating budget slide, Marilyn. So just to reiterate, the operating budget request for 2021 was for a total of just over, a little over $222 million. That is made up of our debt payment, which is about $83.5 million. Our personnel request is about $62 million. Non-personnel overall is, totals about $66 million, and then the SBU program, we, you know, we pull that out to highlight it separately, and we're requesting just about $10.9 million. So all the details of that are in the budget book, and we discussed them in more detail last week, so hopefully folks have had an opportunity to take a look. The first question I wanted to go over, you, where did, that went too far? Just, there you go. So there was just one question really about the personnel, which had to do with savings from vacancies in 2021, and we did share some information about our early retirement incentive program that the city offered. Between that and just vacancies from 2020, we were going into, we're going into 2021 with about 63, that, that number changes, you know, as we continue to hire and people retire, but the budget was based on about 63 known vacancies, and just wanted to be clear again, that the request in 2021, and really in all years, does never, it does not fully fund all of the MSD positions, because we always have existing and anticipated vacancies. So it is somewhat of a, you know, a management of risk when it comes to how much savings that we can provide in, you know, put in our budget in any given year. I think the, the key and the most important thing to look at for our personnel request is for 2021, if we kept all, if we kept the same budget as 2020, plus the known increases that we can't control with our cost of living and healthcare increases, that would have been 3.2 million higher, and we are only increasing the personnel budget by 2.1, which was 3.5%. So we really are putting ourselves in a position of having to hold vacancies and, and plan our hiring very carefully. We continue, before we approve any vacancies, to really look at the need and evaluate the positions and, and the overall staffing of each division. Specifically, one, one thing real quick before we move on, with the, the early retirement, we did do a deep dive into our staffing and with positions that were going to be vacated or, or already were vacant, we identified 10 positions that we would hold vacant, meaning we're not, you know, proceeding with filling those positions, and that does represent a savings of 1.2 million. However, we're only considering two of those as positions that we could eliminate fully. Those were the two positions we mentioned, that are the high-level superintendent positions that we did some reorganization in order to reach a savings of $344,000. So again, because of the vacancies and our efforts to manage the hiring, you know, we, we were able to limit the personnel budget request to this increase over 2020 of just 3.5%. There was a question about our utility costs, and we had shown a range for an increase in utility costs, just to be clear, we budgeted an extra $300,000 for utility increases. Utilities, again, make up over 30% of our treatment budget. We're obviously a large user of energy to run our plants and pump stations, and we do see projected cost increases. So, you know, we discussed that a little bit last time, I just wanted to be clear there, that the budget was 300, it could be lower, and that's why we showed the range. Can move on to the next one. There was also just a general question about, you know, are there any items that are really more, you know, wishes than essential needs of the utility? And so just, just to illustrate how we put together our budget, we start early in the year, and in June, actually get the request from each, each division manager or superintendent from all of our MSD divisions of their needs for 2021. And if, as you can see there, when, when we first got the requests internally, that added up to an increase in the non-personnel budget of $8 million over 2021. By the time we, MSD management really went through it and, you know, made decisions about what was actually essential and what wasn't, we pulled out, you know, almost $4 million, or we did pull out $4 million of those requests. So, you know, in our view, we really have already done the work of pulling out all the, the wish list items that we could going into 2021, and these are just some examples. So we deferred Ash Lagoon Cleaning, felt that we could defer that another year, so that was about $1.5 million, and we mentioned the condition assessment in cleaning last week. We reduced the, the overall dollars for that in 2021. And then the last item I just wanted to respond on was related to the safety initiative with our lockout, tagout, and energy control procedures. I did say something about having some savings there, I wanted to be clear where, what we did was, initially, we, we did have a higher dollar amount in there, but we, we just hadn't really refined our approach. We had a request for information to, to understand what it would cost to have the professional services to support our own staff in this, and the, the request that is currently in the budget is what we, what we do need for 2021 to complete all the tasks that we can complete in a given calendar year. So I don't, we aren't cutting any corners or reducing any scope on that safety request, it just was refined based on the additional information. So again, you know, we, we really do that work, and we also have conversations with the county team, you know, before we present it at this hearing.
Diana, before you go further, I have a question. When you first started, I think it was the first page, you said that there was an amount of $344,000 that represented two positions. Now that, that sounds like, I, you know, I'm thinking that that would be a high level, two high-level positions, and I'm curious as to what they are, that has been eliminated.
Yes, and I don't have the exact salary in front of me, but the two positions that were eliminated were a superintendent level, which is a very high-level position. This is individuals who have retired, so there was no elimination, but what we decided to do was to merge those divisions, you know, really, you know, consolidate our separate groups, so one is still showing us as a division here with WL is watershed operations, but we really put that work into other existing divisions and eliminated the management, the high-management level position, so two...
You explained that to us, and I was just wondering if those were the positions.
Yeah, and I believe the salary that is used for that 344 is the, probably the top step, which is 120, and I think then that includes the benefits and, and other costs associated to reach that 344.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so just one more on the operating budget, and that had to do with our request to add $1 million to the sewer backup budget, and I just wanted to be clear, we talked about this as being a property owner incentivization or a pilot, but the $1 million was not the cost to, to perform a study. The $1 million assumed that we would actually be implementing something in 2021 by, you know, so that would be money available to property owners that would be eligible to have an incentive to do work on their, on their property. Because we do not have the program outlined and haven't had conversations with the county and really developed these criteria, I wanted to be clear that, you know, we could scale this back and, and see how far we get in 2021, and if we can establish a program that is agreed on by the board, you know, the, that is what the funding would be for, so, so the $1 million, you know, really, you know, would require some, some effort to be able to provide that program, and therefore, if it's preferred, we could scale back the request to about $100,000 to do the work to, you know, establish a program, and then if it's approved in 2021, we can always have an additional appropriation. But if there were questions about that, I just wanted to be clear, it wasn't $1 million to just develop something.
Well, can I make a comment about the incentive program? I think it's a great idea. To cut it from $1 million to $100,000 is a major cut, so possibly look at maybe $500,000 or, I mean, $100,000 that could benefit our residents, I think it needs to be raised just a little higher than that, not necessarily $1 million.
You know, what I was thinking is that our team has become very good at putting programs together quickly, so, you know, I don't, I don't know, I just have faith that Holly and the team, they could put together a program for a million bucks.
Yeah, I, to just reiterate, I, I think we're comfortable with the million, if it helps expedite whatever, you know, incentive program is agreed to. So Diana, I don't think you're hearing from any of us that we feel the need to cut that back necessarily, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we allot a million, we don't go through it in this budget, it will remain in continuing budget so that we can get that done. Sure, and this is part of our sewer backup budget, you know, line item in the operating budget, so, you know, if, if we weren't able to, you know, get this program off the ground, and there were other SBU needs, you know, it would be available for that as well. So, that being said, we'll, we'll certainly manage this and, and inform the board when we're ready to kick it off.
So there you go, Holly.
Yeah, thank you. Yes. Okay, so just a couple things on the capital improvement budget request, this is just, all I'm pointing out right here is that the 2021 CIP was 131.2 million, which is slightly higher than 2020, but actually a little lower than 2019, so we've really been hovering around the same, you know, dollar amount for the capital budget for the last couple of years. Go to the next slide, there were a few specific questions. One, just to reiterate, the East Side SBU study, so again, when we're talking about sewer backups, traditionally, we have about $10 million budgeted in the operating budget, none of that money has been used to look for, you know, capital project solutions, that's, that money has all been used to respond to sewer backups and to pay claims and work on prevention devices after people have already had a number of sewer backups and are eligible for that program. So what we're, what we're saying and what we're proposing here is that there's in, you know, we, we are now looking at data and collecting data, we think, in a better way, and then have some tools to evaluate hotspots and look for potential capital solutions, in other words, you know, solutions to increase the capacity in these neighborhoods. So the study, you know, we identified this area, but it's really quite general. The neighborhoods that we were going to initially look at would be, it was Norwood, Oakley, Hyde Park, it would include Beauchamp as well, as you, I don't know if you can see there, but it really, this isn't meant to have any firm boundaries, it's just to say, you know, we haven't looked at any projects here, and that's what we'd like to do initially with this East Side study. And then the results from, you know, from this study would be identifying projects that would then be brought forward for, for funding in those specific neighborhoods or locations. There was, if you can go to the next slide, the, there was a question about how do we decide which community gets projects, so again, we, we're not developing these based on exclusively by neighborhood, we're really looking at this data that we've been collecting, and something we haven't done is really using SBU risk mitigation as a driver for projects, so, you know, obviously, it's not limited to an East Side neighborhood, or the East Side or the West Side, we just hadn't really put any resources in this area recently, so there are other projects underway for other neighborhoods, and there is additional work that would need to be done. I didn't want to spend much time on this, because these projects that I have listed here, we, we don't have a significant request, there's a local match for Muddy Creek, but these are, are things that are already underway, and we could talk about each one of them at length, probably in a separate meeting, so, but just to reiterate, the Muddy Creek project is where we're, we have a grant application in and indication that that will be awarded in the next month, and we've already begun work on looking at the properties that would be purchased through that program. Mount Washington is a project area where we've had repeated sewer backups, that project has been in the design phase, funding was already provided, and we are doing some additional planning work to better align that with the CSO reduction that's required under the whip, and we can provide an update on that in 2021 as well. And Ludlow Run was mentioned, and this is a project that we also have planning underway and could provide a more detailed update. The Ludlow Run objectives are related to CSOs, which are combined sewer overflows, and not actually private property SBUs, so it's a little bit different, but those are just three examples, and, and I didn't want to get too far off track, because they're not really highlights of the CIP request.
Hey Diana, can I stop you for a second, and let's go ahead and get that update that you refer to, beginning of next year, related to these projects? I get a lot of calls, especially related to Muddy Creek and Ludlow Run, so I would be grateful for an update there come next year.
That'd be great. Do that in January.
Quarterly, yeah, let's do it in January.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to address the questions about the CIP labor allowance, so this is, was something that we showed when we were comparing the 2019 CIP to 2020 and 2021. Prior to 2020, we allocated the engineering labor by a project-by-project basis. In 2020, we created an allowance, so we didn't have to do it in each project budget, but this really wasn't new in 2020, the dollars are just in a different place, and to be clear, the, the engineering labor, so the, the... so the cost for that personnel is charged to both operating and capital. Of course, it's not duplicate charge. So anything that we're not able to charge to a capital project is paid with our personnel dollars out of our operating budget. It's been about 60-40. So we're, you know, we look to capitalize some of those labor costs because they're directly tied to the projects. And, you know, that's a recommended industry balance there. And there's been some discussions, and going into next year, we're increasing the allowance from 5 million to 5.5 just based on the amount of projects that our engineers are working on. That other category was much lower in 2019 because it only contained program contingency at the time. So if there aren't any more questions, I'll move on from that. But I just wanted to reiterate that it's not double counted there. Okay. I did just have a couple of project highlights, but there isn't too much to say on this. And I'm pleased to report that we've been talking with the county team and have alignment on most of these. So the Phase 1 construction compliance assurance, though, is a very important request for 2021. This is money that's required for us to demonstrate compliance with the work that we completed in Phase 1. So that's our Lower Mill Creek Partial Remedy. And this is the work that involves the flow monitoring and achieving the performance criteria based on our hydraulic model. There is a very, so what's up here is there, you know, the approval and the tight timeframe we have to complete this work based on the completion of our last construction project, which was in January of 2020. So we have six months after, we have 12 months to complete the flow monitoring, and then six months after that to submit a report. So we're following those timelines and getting this work done. And that's what that 4.2 million is for. Go ahead. The Little Miami solids disposal was another one we mentioned briefly last week. And I just wanted to clarify, the request here is 5.5 million, but it is for design funding at this time. I anticipate that this may also require some, you know, more discussion and information sharing with the public. But during the design, you know, this is for our digestion facilities for solids management on the east side. And currently, other than the incineration here at Mill Creek, we are hauling a large quantity of our sludge and landfilling it on a daily basis. And it's really not sustainable financially, and it's also really not the best method for managing our solids. So seems that we are all in agreement on this moving forward. But it is a really important project that I look forward to, you know, being able to talk about with the public more next year as we get into the design. And there's just, the next project was one that we did not mention last week. And this is a request at this time just for planning dollars, but it is a fairly exciting collaboration. We've worked with the Cincinnati Zoo before. The work that MSD would be planning has to do with sewers that we have that are old and failing in this area outside the zoo with a goal of diverting, separating and diverting stormwater to a detention facility. The zoo would then treat the diverted stormwater and use it on site for their animal care needs. And they've set some pretty high goals for themselves, and one is net zero water usage. So planning this in collaboration with the zoo allows us to address what are extreme high-risk sewers and capacity-related issues in the area. And also, you know, ties into their capital improvement work that they're completing on site. So looking forward to working with them on that project. And, you know, we have other large community developers or organizations like the hospitals that we look for similar ways to collaborate on these types of projects. And last, there is one project that I wanted to highlight because MSD has recommended this project advance in 2021 for design. It is both a high-priority asset management project and a whip phase to a project that the county has identified. So this is a pump station here at our Mill Creek facility. It is the largest pump station in the district, and it is viewed as, you know, our highest-risk asset because of the failures we have seen in recent years with gates and concrete structures and the potential, if we were unable to isolate this for repairs, that there would be massive amounts of untreated flow going into the creek and the Ohio River. And that is something, you know, to be avoided. This project is required under the whip. Well, under the whip, we are going to construct a wet weather facility and enhance high-rate treatment facility here that will require additional pumping capacity that this existing facility cannot provide. So advancing this project is part of a phased construction approach, started with the diversion chamber that you recently have funded. And we have, we will have construction complete on soon. This is the next step in that cycle of projects. Again, MSD has been recommending to advance that project and recommends all of the projects in the CIP based on our best professional judgment. You know, we have hundreds of engineers and utility managers that spend many hours putting together the CIP, cannot go through all the detail in these meetings, but appreciate the opportunity to talk about a few of the important projects here today and answer any questions. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Diana. Commissioners, shall we go to public comment?
I'd like to just make one final comment. Thank you, Diana, for specifically addressing our questions that we had last time. You did a great job. My only question, and the budget at utilities, you had indicated it would be 300,000. And I remember your last report, you said it was a range from 100 to 300. So I was just wondering, why did you, you know, just settle on the $300,000 cost? And you don't have to answer that now. I want to get to the residents. But I did want to bring that up. I noticed that there was a range the last time. So that's all I had, Madam President.
Thank you. All right. Okay, you are on mute, Commissioner Parks. There you go.
Yeah. So Diana, if you can answer, you know, that was my question too. But if you can't. And you probably can, you have the.
Diana, why don't you go ahead and answer, and then we'll get to the.
I can answer that. In the budget request, we, you know, we actually have, I think it's, probably Marilyn might have the exact number, then the amount that we have for utilities in the treatment budget is much greater than 300,000.
It's 8.3 million dollars.
Okay, 8.3 million dollars. So it's a, it's a 8.3 million dollars. The 300,000 is the projected increase. We really, it's difficult to come up with a firm number. So we said it was about, we project increases from 100 to 300,000. We're asking for 300,000 so that we can cover all those bills, you know, if our projections are on the high end. You know, that's something that we have folks that, you know, monitor and manage the utility bills and what we're seeing. So the request has been 8.3, which represents a $300,000 increase.
And, and go ahead. I was aware that that was not, go ahead, Victoria.
No, no, I was just saying, okay.
Okay. And I was just saying, I was aware that that was not the total amount, but I, you know, I like looking at the bottom end, and then if we have to go up. But it's no big, it is a small thing in the grand scheme of the total amount. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. I know there are people on that would like to comment related to this public hearing. So Bridget, could you help us facilitate that?
Thanks, Commissioner. Wanda Ball has her hand up. She is unmuted on my end. So Wanda, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you can address the board.
Yes, Bridget, can you hear me?
Yeah, Wanda, it seems like you might have, there you go, a few silence. Yeah.
Is that better? Okay. President.
You have an echo going, Wanda.
I know, I don't know how to stop it.
Wanda, are you on your cell phone or are you on your computer?
I'm actually on both.
So turn off one of them and talk to us. Or silence one of them.
Okay, is that better? Wait a minute.
No. We're getting, we're getting feedback because you're on two devices. So.
So Wanda, how about this? How about turn off your computer and just talk to us.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, that's better. You did it.
That's better.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear.
No.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
You can hear me. Okay. President Drehouse, Vice President Summero Dumas, and Commissioner Parks, Communities United for Action has submitted our comments prior to the clerk in full. We have some COFA representatives present to speak on our concerns. On affordability and sewer bill forgiveness for COVID hardship, we are pleased to see that there will be no sewer rate increase for the sixth consecutive year. As the board considers rates restructuring to account for the burden of impervious surfaces on our sewers and negotiates a base 2 plan for the wet weather improvement program with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. While the Customer Assistance Program, CAP, for low-income senior homeowners has been implemented, it does not cover all senior citizens eligible for the current program. MSD must improve its outreach to enroll people in the existing CAP program. We recommend a detailed plan outlining the costs of outreach and advertisement for the program. The plan should include advertisement in every water and sewer bill. Communities United for Action also recommends MSD anticipate an additional $1 million increase, decrease, I'm sorry, an additional $1 million decrease in revenue to immediately expand the program to senior renters who pay the water and sewer bill. This expansion does not require a change in any of the Ohio Revised Code. Additionally, we urge the board to implement a temporary program for relief for back sewer bills for ratepayers experiencing COVID-related hardships. We understand that Ohio Revised Code restricts the types of assistance that county sewer districts can provide to ratepayers. But we do not, however, see a penalty enumerated in the law for implementing such programs on either a temporary or permanent basis anyway. So we are asking that the commissioners, whatever the penalty, if there is even a penalty, that you would consider administering a program to help those that are having hardships with their sewer portion of the bill due to the pandemic. And that's all for me.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Andrea Baker. Andrea, you are unmuted on my end. Andrea Baker is the screen name. You're unmuted on our end. And if you unmute yourself, go ahead and address the board.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, County Commissioners Drehouse, Dumas, and Parks. COFA encourages the board to scrutinize the new heat map data from MSD about where complaints occur and are addressed and the criteria they use for choosing new source control projects to alleviate sewer backups. Furthermore, COFA recommends that projects are funded to increase sewer capacity and decrease the amount of money spent on prevention devices. We strongly oppose any pilot program that will require homeowners to assume financial responsibility for prevention of backups caused by lack of sewer capacity. I live in Bon Hill, and they have been placing the sewer devices on my street, which is Zandina Avenue, and throughout Bon Hill. And some of the neighbors have been getting some of the sewer waste from these devices backing up into their basements. And so that's why we are concerned whether or not these sewer prevention devices are really working. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Robert. Robert, you are unmuted on my end.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We view the delay of the homeowner buyout in Muddy Creek as a violation of the consent decree for the basement, water and basement program. I see on here you said that that's going to be in January. We've been told that now for three years. What makes January a good time this time? Hello?
Yes, thank you. So we, I'm going to ask Diana to answer the comments after we've heard from everyone.
Okay.
So do you have anything further?
Well, the other, the only other comment is, if that's in fact the case, why can't we go ahead and start the appraisals on the property so that we can get the, this thing done quicker? We've waited long enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is F. Miller. F. Miller, you are unmuted on my end. If you unmute on your end, you may address the board.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Drehouse, Dumas, and Parks. And Diana Christie, thank you from MSD. I just have a question about the website. I know that in the budget, you have allocated 130,000K to do upgrades. And, you know, what we want is, you know, more transparency and that it be more user-friendly, and also that it be searchable, especially like the dashboards. Well, especially, I guess there's only one Phase 1 dashboard that has been developed, that this might be able to be sorted by, I guess, area, like Mill Creek or Ludlow Run or whatever is in one of those columns on the dashboard. And is Deb Leonard still the lead web person on, you know, developing these dashboards? And also, would it be possible for a dashboard to be developed for the bridge projects that are supposed to be like, I guess, designed and implemented between 2018 and 2020 like you have for the Phase 1 dashboard? I mean, there's a lot of information on the MSD website. And also, is it MSDGC.org? Is that the HTTPS link to get into a secure website for the MSD dashboard or just the MSD website? That's all that I have. But we'd like to make it searchable and maybe sortable that people can really see what is happening in their specific neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Marilyn Wall. Marilyn, you are unmuted on my end.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for holding another hearing on this subject. I sent some detailed comments in a little bit ago to the commissioners, and I will try to summarize those briefly, since they're kind of long and a little tedious. But the, while we appreciate the amount of information MSD has provided, in a lot of cases, it's not enough information, and it's provided in too little time for people to really be able to assess what is going on with such very large numbers of projects and large expenditures. We would like to encourage MSD to get information to the public, a lot of it on a more timely basis than they, that they used to, particularly with the EMARS and having monthly project reports on consent decree projects, as well as doing asset management projects. Secondly, we have concerns about the SBU pilot project. We don't have enough information about what that actually is, but understanding from last week, the MSD would need a change to the consent decree to be able to implement it. to be able to implement it. We're very concerned about what that means and if costs are being shifted to the victims of basement backups rather than MSD being responsible for the lack of capacity. Because a backflow preventer is not going to address the lack of capacity issues. It should be going to move the problem elsewhere. So we would like significant more information on that before it's even considered. Also, MSD's documentation is giving a fairly mixed message about stormwater removal. We believe that far more stormwater removal needs to be done to help address the sewer overflow problems as well as the basement backups. The, we would like to see better planning and implementation and support for the consent decree that includes both getting the Phase Two negotiations completed with USCPA so that we actually have a Phase Two plan, with performance goals, with deadlines, and that people have a sense of what's actually going to be done in the out-years, as well the spending on the consent decree and the projects in the 2020 CIP, at least as of August, were less than half of what was authorized for the CIP. Projects have, had not had any spending on them through the end of August. And it's, is very concerning in that these projects are being delayed. And it's very concerning in that if they're not going to be done, that there are other projects that could have been done with these funds that could have been in this particular, in that CIP, as well as moving other very necessary projects forward. We're really disappointed to see that Ludlow Run project did not get to the point of having a BCE and being able to be presented to the commissioners as well. This is what we were told would happen earlier this year. But it hasn't happened. And again, that is another project that's being delayed that has a negative impact currently on community. We'd like to see the sewer inspections accelerated. This is something we have raised many times in the past, although I don't know if we've particularly talked about it with the current commissions, but the, having half the pipes not fully inspected raises a lot of concerns about how much INI is really in the system that could be prevented, not have to cover the treatment cost. Because just of leaks and collapses in the system, as well as the related sewer backups that may be caused by this lack of knowing whether or not maintenance even needs to be done or repairs need to be done. There seems to be a lot of confusion about the pump station being built for the new proposed high-rate treatment facility at Mill Creek. Supposedly, the building of the diversion chamber early and as part of the bridge project was supposed to eliminate this or mitigate this risk of pump station failure. So this is not really making a whole lot of sense to spend this money now without having the sizing for the wet weather facility that MSD is proposing and having the right modeling to know exactly how big that facility needs to be, as well as how many pumps are needed and at what volume they need to be. And also, it doesn't seem to align with the whole goal of trying to remove stormwater from the systems to avoid treatment costs as well as more expensive sewer overflow problems. So we would like to also request that you continue to accept comments through, until this is, this does come up for votes, if it is not going to be voted on today. Since I've been found, have not yet found where the household treatment system budget is in the new CIP. And we would like to be able to add further comments to the ones we've sent in. Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you. Bridgette, are there others?
Yeah, we have Jackie Gruer is unmuted on my end.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. And we've, I'm with COOFA, and I live along Ludlow Run. And we've previously met with each of you about a policy for consumer engagement, looking to have a uniform public engagement policy on infrastructures and development projects that use public resources. We'll continue to encourage the Board to implement a clear policy. And in the meantime, since you're considering MSD's 2021 budget, we'd like to see funds allotted to public engagement for any major projects that would be, that would be involving public funds. As I said, I'm here because of Ludlow Run, where we have six CSOs that have backups send overflows into our properties along Spring Lawn. And, and funding for planning was allotted in 2019 from the Urgent Capacity Fund. And, and now we are making progress and, and actually, and we appreciate the website having a specific Ludlow Run project site on the website, so we can keep track of what's going on. But the planning phase isn't, is now estimated to not be completed until 2022, which seems like a long time. We've asked to have input into planning, but we are told we won't have input until the design phase. Now, the residents on Kirby Road, when MSD did projects with them, they pretty much said the, the, the design was, what, they were just told what was going to happen, that this was going to be happening, happening, and they didn't have a lot of input to, to it. And the residents on Ludlow Run said that they had focus groups prior to the project starting and were able to have input into it. So it seems like there's just not a standardized policy for consumer engagement with MSD and probably not with any other administrative or, or operations development things in the county.
Thank you.
We would urge you to, urge, if we're going to keep after you, to keep after about this consumer engagement process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a Galaxy S8 that has their hand raised. You're unmuted on my end.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you all for having, Commissioners, thank you for holding us. My name is Ella Thomas, and I am a resident of Bon Hill. And I, you know, I was listening to the report earlier and was quite offended by that we have been having sewer backup, I've been having sewer backup, and not only me, but the residents of Bon Hill have been having sewer backups for a while. And it's always back on the residents to fix the problem. And I see that it was a special project done for the East Side, and it was a special project done for the zoo, but nothing else is going to address the residents of Bon Hill. We pay our tax dollars as well, houses, sewer backup prevention. I had to call MSD out to my house two weeks ago for a sewer backup, where they put prevention devices in, which are, look, they're huge and not aesthetic appealing to the residents. And even if we want to sell our home, what was the value we can give for our home? Because of this device that sits in the middle of the front yard, which is so unacceptable. So I, I have concerns about what is MSD doing? How are they budgeting for animals versus bu- budgeting money, dollars for the residents in the community? How can they shift around the Bon Hill community and go from the East Side to Ludlow to the zoo, but you're not addressing the residents in Bon Hill? So I, I thank you for this time. I am offended. It needs to be addressed immediately. Because cleaning up raw sewage coming out your, the toilet in the sewer is unacceptable to me, and living with odors is unacceptable to me, for me as a person and for my residents that, that are in the community as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Susan Bilt. Susan, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Hello, County Commissioners and MSD members. My name is Susan Stortz-Bills, and I've been a proud Cove Dale resident for 54 years. I truly appreciate the help that you are giving all the neighborhoods. I hear Oakley, Norwood, and Hyde Park are receiving and they're resolving sewer backup issues. Our reality is that Cove Dale continues to wait over 50 years for a solution to fix our entire street. Roughly six houses have received sewer backup devices along Cove Dale. And our newly-named Cove Dale tanks, which appeared on a sign this week on Ralph Avenue, are not solving the continued backup issues as hoped. Many houses, including mine, are continuing to have sewer backup occurrences. I have been denied an SBU device, and the few houses that have received them, as my other friends have mentioned, have pushed their overflow to the neighboring residents. We know this is happening across the city, Bon Hill, other places. We need public engagement and solutions, just like other areas have been promised. We also should be included in future projects. Cove Dale, Green Township, and Muddy Creek have been on MSD's and the National EPA's radar, and have been acknowledged in heat map data. The West Side, and I do appreciate hearing the East Price Hill progress, needs to be made a priority like so many other neighborhoods. I am very happy to hear Jack's report that East Price Hill is getting some help, and I am truly thankful for that. I am also happy to hear the Muddy Creek residents have been promised for January for mo- for some movement in their settlements and will be bought out. It is time that promises are kept to Cove Dale and other West Side areas to ensure we get the attention as Bon Hill, as Ludlow Run, and so many other places that we deserve. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to just double check. Robert, you still have your hand waved, raised. Did you want to ask another question?
No, I just did it by mistake. Sorry.
No worries. That seems to conclude our public comments.
Okay, so that was, that's a long list. And thank you all for being here, and thank you all for the public comments. I think it's really important that we hear them in a public forum. I, I know we've talked to you as Commissioners individually in some cases, but it's, it's great to have you on. Before we go to Diana, Jeff, I neglected to have the county weigh in related to these budgets. And so let's go to that very quickly. And then Diana, we're going to sort out the best way to respond to some of the concerns that we just heard. But let, let's have Jeff go first.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just be, be very, very brief. So I, I think, as you know, at the last hearing, the, the county team was still in the process of working with MSD on both the operating budget and, and the CIP. I think largely on the, on the operating budget, I think the county team, county administration is very much aligned with the recommendation that MSD has, has submitted. I think, as it relates to the CIP, I do want to thank the, the county team and the MSD staff. I know that they've been working together over the past several days very diligently to get questions answered and to revise or to, to reconcile different concerns of, of the county team, to the point now where I think we are largely, largely aligned on, on the CIP with a couple of qualifications. I think that there will be some administrative items that we would, we're still going to ask for some, some additional information from MSD on, or we may have some type of, we've done this in the past, overlay resolution as it relates to the, to the CIP, where the Board would modify the CIP. For some smaller administrative things, there are some planning projects where I think the county team was recommending that there should be some checkpoints as business case evaluations are completed, just to make sure nothing major changes with regards to specific projects. And that would be in lieu of actually holding a planning project until a BCE was done. We don't think that that is, is absolutely necessary, but probably just more prudent that we ensure that as we do get the BCEs complete, that there is a checkpoint that the county team has, had been able to, to weigh in on that. The addition of county oversight costs in the CIP is usually done. I don't think that was included this, in this year's CIP, so we're going to want to certainly include those. And probably most notably, and this came up a couple of times, I think Diana, Director Christie raised it. I think I heard Ms. Wall raise it as well, in that relates to the Mill Creek wastewater treatment plant, pump station, high, high-rate treatment system. And I know our team continues to have some questions on it. I think the county team recognizes it's a, it's an urgent project. It's a part of our Phase Two. It's part of, it was a part of the, the city's Phase Two as well. So no one doubts the urgency of the project. I think there just continue to be some questions over some disparate business case evaluations that were done. The most recent one, which included a recommendation that had a higher price tag associated with it, that our team would like to have addressed. So that's really the main project, I think, that is, as we go through the next week, we hope to get aligned on that. And I would, I will report, report back to the Board on whether we have enough alignment to recommend proceeding with that next week, or whether we have to take a different approach in the CIP as it relates to that project, but we will report back to the Board on that. So that's, that would be the only comments I have for both budgets. Commissioner Holly or Joe Graff, who are on, have anything that they would like to add? They feel, they can feel free to do so, but I think that's from a high level, the, the major issues.
Thank you. I don't see either of Holly or Joe popping on, so we'll leave it at that. Thank you for the county's perspective. So Diana, and Director Christie, I don't mean to be overly informal, just my nature. So we, there was a lot of frustration expressed from, from the speakers. And so I want to categorize this, though, so that we're spending our time wisely. So in front of us, we have budgets, the cap budget and the operating budget. We intended, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, to try to get those voted on by the 17th, which was our last legislative meeting of the year. We do have one meeting after that. It's a staff meeting on the 22nd. And so the, the goal here is to get a budget passed on the 17th. We've given ourselves a little bit of a buffer. So some of what we heard was related to the budgets and to the presentation. And some of the other items are ongoing issues that we have heard many, many times about Ludlow Run, for instance, the issue down on Muddy Creek, the, the issue in Bon Hill. And so it seems to me that some of these are related to the budgets, and some of them are things we might want to have. I, I don't want to shortchange that conversation about some of these projects that are obviously so important to people in this community, and some of their concerns related to continued backups. So I'd like to maybe think through how to best address some of those community concerns that are, they're budget-related, kind of, but, but not, not real. And, and I don't want to shortchange them, so, so maybe we talk about those either at a staff meeting after the 17th, once the budget is passed, because I don't know that passing the budget would preclude that. So Diana, I'll be interested to hear you weigh in as to how to try to manage some of what we heard and give them all, you know, their, their due time, really, in front of the Commission and in front of yourselves.
Yes, thank you. I know I tried to capture everything and between the others on, on the call as well. You know, we certainly want to address all the questions that were raised and the concerns. I do agree, perhaps, I mean, I think it just, there's a lot here, and it would be difficult to do it all either today or before the next hearing. I, I'd be happy to, you know, consolidate the, the questions we heard and perhaps share responses. I mean, there are a few things I could comment on right now to perhaps clarify some issues. But overall, we, we could perhaps share what we believe that the main issues presented were and some, you know, some feedback before next Thursday. And then those that would need a longer discussion or a discussion after the budget process.
Yeah, so and some of them were related to the budget. So maybe if you could respond to those, and then I think it would be useful to schedule. So maybe if you could respond to those, and then I think it would be useful to schedule another hearing, whether it's the, you know, the last staff meeting of the year for the commission or early next year in January. I don't remember, I don't know if those on the call realized that we have quarterly updates from MSD. And so Diana, when is the next one of those scheduled?
Well, we had been doing, we've been doing monthly staff meetings on different topics. We do the quarterly budget update, but we've been trying to do more frequent, and I, other than, we didn't schedule one for December.
Well, because of the budget conversations, right?
Right, right. Yeah, we didn't schedule a separate discussion. No, I mean, it would be in, in early January, then we could, you know, talk about the, the various neighborhood projects.
Okay, well, let's, can you please respond to the budget-related items first, and then we'll take it from there?
Sure. And you mean now?
Yes.
Just, okay, just so hard in this forum. Sorry. So let me quickly, I, I think the first comments were from Wanda Ball on COFA. And while this is not totally budget-related, I did want to share that on the customer assistance program or the cap, we do have a outreach program, or, you know, some outreach already planned. We have a mailer planned, so this would already be part of our budget for the cap program in the first quarter of next year. That would be a direct mail. We also continue to run that ad in the water bills that go out. You know, we just, we have a lot of customers that, that don't get the physical water bill, but that has been really our most effective way to reach our seniors that are eligible for that program. And then I believe we are also, we recently put up some posters in other, in various public locations, like the Cincinnati Rec Centers. So, you know, we have an outreach plan. We'd be happy to share more detail about it. But we do know, you know, that, that it's, it's, we have not reached everyone that is eligible for the program as it stands today. So I wanted to share that. We can address some of the other questions, I think, about the eligibility and the criteria for that program, I would say are not really budget-related at this, at this time. The, the next one that was a budget question, I think there were some concerns expressed about the, the heat map that we shared and the SBU prevention devices overall. So again, that might require diving into a little more to make sure we address those concerns directly. And just to be clear, the, the East Side study that is being proposed does not have firm boundaries where we, you know, we wanted to make a, you know, an effort this year to use the data to develop some projects and to look at this, and we know we can't cover everything. So I've mentioned a few neighborhoods. Bon Hill is actually another neighborhood that could be included in, you know, our efforts this year, because, you know, it's really, you know, this is preliminary planning work to identify projects, and I do know that that's an area that has had some, some repeated backups. So Bon Hill is certainly, you know, one that could be covered, and, you know, I didn't want to leave that out, so.
Can I, can I clarify, Diana? I think from my perspective, not only through the public hearing, but in individual conversations with people, I don't think the frustration is that there will be continued work, including the East Side. I think the frustration is that we haven't finished the work in some of the other areas that have been on the radar for a while. So I think that's what we were hearing from people, that they want to continue to have the product, or the, the projects that we've been talking about for a few years now, completed, if you will, before we launch into a study with additional projects before those are done. Just, that's just my perspective on what we've been.
Yes, that's a good point, and I did, something I heard last week as well. So I do want to assure everyone that, you know, when we are talking about developing a new study and identifying additional projects, we're not taking any resources away from the projects that are already underway and that are in, you know, whatever stage of the process. I do recognize that, you know, there's things that have taken longer than anyone wanted. But again, the, the development and the identification of new projects is not the reason for that. It is because of various obstacles along the way, whether it be funding or design challenges to some of these solutions. They're, they are very complex problems, and it's difficult to, to design solutions for them. So, you know, for example, you know, nothing that we would be starting on this year would take away from the Muddy Creek project. I, we did have a question today about the Muddy Creek project and why, you know, why January. I know we, again, I, Mary Lynn's on and has been intimately involved in this project and in communication about the funding that we're receiving through FEMA for that grant. But I, you know, I'm confident in saying that we, we really, you know, having that funding to support the project at the, at the scale that we want to do, to be able to purchase those homes, is really imperative, you know, from a ratepayer perspective and a perspective and affordability. So, you know, we, we have every indication that that funding will be approved in January, and then, you know, we are prepared to begin the work immediately and have done the, the work, you know, to get us to that point. So that once we receive the funding, we, we can proceed. So that's, you know, that's where that stands. There was specific questions about the website, which is a budget request. We did want to have some additional funding to, really is to create, to overhaul our website. Right now, we don't have the capabilities to do some of the things that I believe it was Florence Miller was, was asking about. You know, we have, we have a lot of information on there, but we aren't really tied into any of our other databases and existing information. We have GIS information at MSD that we use for our programs. We can't feed any of that and tie real-time data into our website as it stands today. So upgrading it and having those capabilities, I believe, will make it a much more user-friendly, you know, platform for our customers to be able to search projects, to look at dashboards in real time. So, you know, we, we, we appreciate the county's support on that. And I think the community will be really pleased if we can get, you know, get that accomplished. Specifically, she requested a dashboard on the bridge projects, and I will make sure that gets underway. And yes, Deb Leonard still manages the website as the contact person. Other budget-specific questions. Marilyn Wall had concerns about the SBU pilot and, and thought perhaps it would require changes to the consent decree. So this is what we discussed again today, the $1 million in the operating budget. I, what we have in mind would not require a change to the consent decree. I just want to be clear that her concerns were that there weren't enough details, and I do understand that, and that is what we've expressed. You know, we, we need to, we wanted to have the support to, to look into this and spend, put some resources behind it to develop an incentive program. And that would be shared with the board prior to implementation. And so there would, you know, be public information. It certainly is not intended to shift costs to the victims of SBUs. It's to provide a more proactive solution before we, before people have backups. So that is the idea with that incentive program that we've proposed in the budget. Let me see if, there was a couple other budget-specific ones that I thought I could comment on. I think the, in particular, some concerns about, you know, a project at the zoo, or again, projects in other locations before we solve these longstanding SBUs. You know, the zoo project is one where we do have sewer backups in Avondale, and performing that work would also be in line with addressing sewer backups. So, you know, again, I can just say that we're, we're not proposing new projects to take resources away from, from existing projects or problems that have already been identified. And the, and let's see, let me see if there's one more, or if you want to remind me of anything. But I think that might have been it, on the ones that I had.
Yeah, and I, I don't think that you addressed it, is that COFA wants input into engineering projects. So, so I, I want to say this first. Well, I don't know. The way that I feel about it is that we have engineers for that. You know, where we truly accommodate them as much as we can. I, I, in COFA, misunderstand, but I think that this request is unreasonable.
I, I have also been, COFA has been in touch with me directly about this same issue, and we certainly do perform, you know, public engagement at various stages in projects. But it really, it really does vary from project to project. So, and perhaps that's what you were thinking as well. We have, we have some projects that are, you know, solely in the, in the boundaries of our treatment plants, don't, don't impact, you know, even odor control issues or anything. So, so having a one-size-fits-all approach for public engagement really would be difficult. And, and the other issue that we have is, there is certain stages of work that, yes, that's for the engineers and the utility professionals to do the planning, and then that is shared, and there are appropriate times to comment. So for example, it is between the planning and the design that we would have perhaps opportunities if we have, you know, have alternatives, and, and we would go to the community at that time. And, you know, we certainly are making efforts to, to be transparent, to provide that information, and to get community impact input at the appropriate times. It can be costly, though, with our professional engineering firms that do a lot of the work for us to have multiple community meetings, you know, throughout, throughout a planning or design phase. So we have to be strategic, I think, and when, when those opportunities should be imposed on the project and without extra cost, so.
Do you let the community know what to anticipate by way of public input then, when a project comes forward?
Yes, and, and again, I mean, we have certain projects that are addressing problems in the community, and those are the ones where, yes, where we, you know, want to seek, seek their input early on and provide updates. We have other projects that, you know, there may be traffic impacts, but there really isn't, you know, a large public interest in the solution and the alternatives that we're evaluating. So, so yes, we, we have community engagement, and then what we've been trying to do is establish a, you know, even a website or somewhere where they can go and get the, get the up-to-date information on these projects. But our project managers have a regular communication protocol with the community.
So it might, it might be helpful for us just to see that, right, the, the typical protocol. And I, I understand that if there are internal projects, we don't need public to weigh in necessarily. But if it's a project that impacts the community, obviously, you know, there's a process then that ensues. And I think it might be helpful for not only the commission, but also for the public to just better understand kind of what your thinking is behind the timing of that and how, what the outreach looks like. So it's true. So it, it leads me, are you, you're finished with the budget stuff, aren't you?
Yeah, well, let me just clarify. I mean, I, I just want to be clear. I, I don't mean to say that we don't have room for improvement on, you know, community outreach and engagement. And, and we've been, you know, listening to COFA on those issues and trying to do better. So we want to continue to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think some of it is just making sure people understand what the rationale for the public process starts here, you know, and then again, here, right? So just kind of understanding that and, and trying to understand if it's not uniform, why it's not uniform from one community project to the next. So as we, and Commissioner Parks, I will ask you to weigh in on this. So regarding some of the updates for some of the projects, and you addressed the Muddy Creek, which I've gotten quite a bit of communication about lately, and also the Ludlow Run project, and also the Covedale project. So I think it might be useful for us to have a staff meeting where we can get updates regarding these projects. You've heard the community input already and some of the frustration. So, you know, where we are, how long we think it will take to resolve some of these issues that are ongoing. And I know, I know it's complicated engineering, Diana, and I don't mean to, you know, give it, cast that aside, but I, I do think it's helpful for people to under, have certain expectations about the work, the length of time it's going to take, and how effective these devices are going to be once they're installed. And if they're not, then, you know, we rethink that and figures, or if it's, you know, one person in the community is getting one, and it creates issues for somebody downstream, you know, what, what that looks like, you know, and how we deal with those kinds of issues. So Commissioner Parks, we could, we've got a couple more staff meetings this year, and then obviously, we've got all of next year to talk about these things at staff meetings. I don't know what your preference is. You're the one that I will be here, either way. You, however, will not, since you are leaving us at the end of the year, to my regret. So what is your preference as to when we hear back from MSD? I heard Diana say it might take a minute to get some of this information together. Potentially, we could do it at the last staff meeting of the year, or we could launch into this as we start up the new year in January. So I leave it to you to offer a preference.
Really, President Denise?
I know, you're welcome.
Next year? No.
And I think, you know, Diana, we could get to them sooner than later next year. I mean, I would definitely say January, because the Muddy Creek thing, what, what's the date on that? Do we know, what's the date? Well, we will have more information on that one.
I, I could just say that we're working with Ohio Emergency Management Agency, and I know that they've been going back and forth with FEMA and the project manager at FEMA. And it appears that FEMA is, you know, ready soon in January to give us an award. I, that's, you know, the best I can say. But I also can say that the money is set aside only for hazard mitigation, and it is set aside for Muddy Creek. It's just a matter of time. They know how anxious we are to get this done and that we're committed. We've got the matching dollars in the 2020 CIP and in the 2021 CIP, so that is in the CIP. And, and we have our right-of-way folks ready and starting to get, and have been getting things in line so that as soon as we get that award, we can hit the ground running for the, the acquisition of 35 properties that have expressed voluntary interest for selling.
Yeah, we're, we're going to want an update on that one, no matter what. So, all right, well, let, go ahead.
My, my serious answer is this, is that if Diana and Mary Lynn, if you are capable of getting back before the end of the year, I, I would like to have it before our last staff meeting. If not, as soon as possible at the first of the next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome, Madam President.
All right, so let's, let's get an update, Diana and Mary Lynn, relative to the other comments that we heard. Let's do it at the last staff meeting of the year. I'm getting my calendar out. That would be the 22nd. Staff meetings allow us a little bit more time, too. They're, they're a little less formal to those that are on the call. So it might be helpful to, to have it during a staff meeting as opposed to one of these legislative sessions. So Diana, we'll rely on you to provide the information that was asked for by the, the public. Invite anyone that is interested to please tune in, and we'll get an update on some of the projects that were identified by members of the public. All right. Okay. Is there anything else, Commissioner Parks? You have anything?
I have three meetings left.
No, I'm not counting. I don't, I guess you're counting. I don't know. Be a nice send-off. Be a nice send-off. Okay, very good. Thank you. Is there something? All right, Diana, there is something in the chat relative to the public input that you might want to take.
Yes, I, I will take note of that, and.
Yeah, that's right. And so, and that'll be part of the conversation that we'll, we'll talk about the public input process, so that we all have a clear understanding of how that works. Okay. All right, thank you. And, and then we are scheduled to vote on these budgets on the 17th. Just to reiterate, am I correct, Jeff?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So we'll look forward to getting additional information relative to some of the concerns that Jeff enumerated. All right, thank you. Thank you all for being on. Thank you especially to those members of the public who weighed in. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. I believe that we have concluded our regular agenda. We do have an executive session. And so Commissioner Parks, I am going to move that we go into executive session unless you have anything additional for the regular meeting?
I do not, and I second.
Oh, I didn't make it yet.
I thought you said you were going to move.
Well, I am going to move. So, so I move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G1 to consider the employment of a public employee or official.
Second.
Ms. Shodryhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Herr Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. So Bridgette, are we just staying on?
Are we going to come back into open session to conclude, to adjourn your meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.